If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains on nation, on ground, indivisible, and infinite in itsness.
I want to give notice that we had an executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and legal issues. And first up tonight, we have some presentations, some police commendations, as you can see by our attendees, which always make us very happy. Chief Flanagan, you want to get us started?
We appreciate it. Just opening up to the community, tonight we're doing some awards, which you haven't seen us up here in a little bit, but these officers continue to deliver a strong amount of work. And I'll start off that Radnor Township is an amazing township with unbelievable team of leadership to my right, where we work cohesively together. As we go into this, these particular incidents, it also displays how our staff, one-on-one in the Police Department, can also work together to make a difference. And we're very proud of those officers. I'd like to acknowledge the family, the officers who are on the road right now, the leadership of Mr. White, and we'll get started. Lieutenant Pinner?
So we'll start with our first and our only solo award for this evening. This is a commendation of merit awarded to Officer James T. Brawley, badge number 144. Officer Brawley, if you'd step forward, please. Why he's come out. Whereas on Monday, 8/4/2025, at approximately 5:25 PM, Officer James T. Brawley attempted to conduct a traffic stop on a motor vehicle for various equipment violations. Upon seeing Officer Brawley in his marked patrol car, the occupants of the vehicle quickly pulled into a parking lot of a restaurant and abandoned their vehicle before the stop could be initiated. Officer Brawley recognized these activities being highly suspicious. He and other Radnor Police Officers established surveillance on the unoccupied car. After approximately 20 minutes, the occupants of the vehicle returned and attempted to leave the area. At this time, Officer Brawley conducted a traffic stop on the car. After conducting the stop, Officer Brawley immediately recognized the indications of possible illegal drug activity. All occupants removed from the vehicle and advised the car would be impounded and a search warrant would be obtained for the right to search the vehicle. Upon execution of the search warrant, various items of illegal narcotics were recovered, as well as multiple credit cards, debit cards, and forged checks. Additionally, further investigation revealed that all three of the occupants of the car were part of a larger crime syndicate out of the area of Houston, Texas. This criminal enterprise is involved in financial crimes, bank fraud, and even human trafficking. Whereas the diligent police work and investigative skills of Officer James T. Brawley led to the identification of and criminal warrants being filed for three very dangerous criminals who were in Radnor Township. Now therefore be resolved that Officer James T. Brawley is awarded this commendation of merit for his highly skilled performance as a Radnor Township Police Officer presented this 29th day. Well, the date's a little off, so we'll just move on from that. Officer Brawley, congratulations. Thank you very much. That's for you. Thank you very much. The second one is a life-saving award for Officer Stephanie Rock, badge 122. Officer Nicholas Lefredo, badge number 114. And Officer Joshua McCann, badge 126. Those three officers can come up, please. Whereas Officer Stephanie Rock, Nicholas Lefredo, and Joshua McCann are all sworn members of the Radnor Township Police Department. On June 26, 2025, at approximately 5:43 PM, these officers were directing traffic at the scene of a motor vehicle accident at the intersection of County Line Road and Brimmore Avenue in Radnor Township. Officer Rock was approached by an unknown male advising he'd just suffered a seizure. At this time, the male began to slow his words and actively start seizing again. After seizing, the male lost consciousness and began to suffer respiratory distress. Officer Rock was immediately joined by Officer Lefredo. Both officers, relying on their training and experience, immediately recognized that the male was suffering from an opioid overdose. Officer Lefredo administered a dose of Narcan to the victim. While the male still appeared to be in immediate distress, Officer Joshua McCann assisted and administered a second dose of Narcan to the victim. At this time, the victim regained consciousness and started breathing. Now therefore be resolved that Officer Stephanie Rock, Nicholas Lefredo, and Joshua McCann of the Radnor Township Police Department are awarded this commendation for life-saving award for an act of valuable community service demonstrating initiative perseverance where their efforts resulted in the saving of a life. Thank you very much.
If I could ask Sergeant Kate Reardon, Sergeant Brady McHale, Officer Nick Rentos, Officer Brett Grease, Officer Dylan Glenn, Officer Josh McCanns, Officer Jamie Metzler, Officer Patrick Rose, Officer Ryan Collins, and Officer Alex Janowski. And the good news is, we're not reading each one of them individually, we'll read them as a group. But I did say it is a team, and these officers displayed teamwork. Whereas on Tuesday, 7/29/25, approximately 12:57 PM, members of the 4th Platoon and the Community Service Unit were dispatched to the Villanova Stop &amp; Shop, 807 East Lancaster Avenue, for the report of an armed robbery at knife point had just occurred. The actor approached the cashier, brandishing a knife, demanding cash and gas while threatening the life of the employee. Members of the 4th Platoon, the Community Service Unit immediately responded to that call. They were able to confirm there were no injuries at the robbery locations. Officers were able to collect flash information about the actor and the fleeing vehicle. The information was disseminated over the police radio, and officers began establishing a perimeter looking for the suspect. Whereas Sergeant Brady McHale, who was working in extra-duty detail on Lancaster Avenue at Aberdeen, was monitoring the radio broadcast about the robbery, immediately observed the fleeing vehicle stuck in traffic. Sergeant McHale made the stop of the vehicle notifying the rest of the Radnor Police. Officers were able to immediately respond, assist Sergeant McHale into taking the actor into custody without any further incident, no injuries to the actor, and very importantly to the police. Whereas the prompt action and teamwork of the 4th Platoon, members of Community Support Unit and Sergeant McHale, a violent and dangerous armed fugitive, was able to be taken into custody. Now therefore be resolved that the members of the 4th Platoon, the Community Service Unit, Sergeant McHale, are awarded this commendation of merit for their highly skilled performance as Radnor Township Police Officers presented today. Congratulations. I do want to thank all the officers. I wish we could give reward out every day for all of our staff here in the township, not just the Police Department, but we're very thankful for the support. Thank you again, and stay safe.
All right, our next presentation is going to go soundly into the lap of our Township Manager as he starts to discuss the 2026 operating and capital budget.
Thank you, Madam President. I am loading up the presentation now. Let's hope that this goes quickly. So thank you for taking a couple minutes tonight, as is typically our cadence in the, at the first meeting in October, is to present where we're at with the 2026 budget. There we go. What I'm going to step through tonight is do a review of the accounting and organizational structure of our operations. I'll go through that quickly, as most of that is refresher and something that we touch on annually. Give an update on where things stand with 2025, discuss a couple of the significant existing conditions that we're seeing and that are playing a role in our budgeting efforts, and then get into some of the details with 2026 on where we're at. One change versus what we've done in prior years is typically we'd have our department heads come up and give the board and public a presentation on their service offerings and how their year has gone and what they're looking for in future years. Instead of doing that step tonight, what I'd like to do is take a couple moments of this presentation and discuss how we come up with the budget, so how this actually comes together. It's a great deal of work by our team, and I want to make sure that everyone knows going forward in these discussions where these numbers are coming from. Then we'll get to the general fund budget recommendations, the sewer fund and the stormwater fund, and then just talk quickly about the next steps as we head down the stretch here in 2025, which is hard to believe. So quickly, our accounting structure overview. We are required to use fund accounting. All municipalities are required to use this pretty much across the country, but definitely in the state of Pennsylvania. We have our general fund, and that gets most of the airtime during budget conversation because it houses all of our administrative departments that are listed there under the general fund. And it is also responsible for transfers that cover our annual departmental capital and equipment transactions, as well as the township's obligation for debt service payments. Then under special revenue funds, as the name would indicate, those exist because some level of authority, usually an ordinance, has been created that distinguishes that activity and mandates that that activity be accounted for separate from all other funds. The top two are great examples of that. We charge a sanitary sewer fee. 100% of that fee income goes into that fund, and then that fund is responsible for the operation of the sanitary system. And the same can be said for all those special revenue funds. The Township's Enterprise Fund is the Willows Fund. I put "sort of" because when that was created decades ago, when the township was operating the mansion as a business venture, that's when it was set up as an enterprise fund. The activity of an enterprise fund is supposed to be business-like, so not too dissimilar from special revenue funds, but distinguished in that it's business-type of activity, which is somewhat similar to how that the operation is with the Willows Park Reserve goes today. And then we have fiduciary funds. That's monies that the township holds in trust for obligations that we have, and that's where our OPEB and our pension funds for our civilian and police retirees exist, as well as our escrow fund, which are monies put up by developers and spent specific to their development for review fees, special agreements made or negotiations made between the board and the developers, and those types of things. So as we typically look at each year, we present the budget in an operating statement format. What we're looking at here is a combined operating statement that includes all of our funds. I've got highlighted right now, that's the general fund activity, it's revenues, expenses, and then ultimately a net revenue or expense number at the bottom. I know it seems counterintuitive, but revenues are credits, so a net revenue bottom line is something that would be in parentheses. So if a number's in parentheses, that's good. If it's not in parentheses, that's a deficit. And then we, all of our special revenue funds are accounted for on the same combined statement, and their activity, again, when you just look at the numbers, you can see most of that activity's in the general fund. And then finally, we have the Willows Fund as well. Only activity out of there pretty much is capital, the outlays that the township is making pursuant to our agreements with the Willows Park Reserve and the funds that were set aside when that agreement was entered into, which started at about 1.8 million. We've done a handful of those projects since then. And as I noted, the bottom line, this is the net revenue or expense. This is ultimately, you know, when we're looking at the health of a fund, we want these to be at zero or above zero. Again, depending on the situation, there's, you know, circumstances that might dictate why a number is in a deficit situation. For example, we take a look at our capital fund, it's showing a $1.7 million spend down. That's spending down bond money, so that's, you would understand why that would be negative or, yeah, negative. Organizationally, again, this is something that typically our departments will come up and present on. Instead, I'll just try to summarize it in this one slide. The organizational chart to the left is how we are organized as an operation. All of the activity that you're looking at there is in the general fund. And then the graph to the right is the headcount for the staff. And as you could see, over time, the staffing of the township has fluctuated a bit. There were services that the township offered back in the early 2000s that went away. There was an according or a similar reduction in staff when those decisions were made. Then in the early, or right around the Great Recession there in 2008 to 11-ish, there was a further reduction in staff for financial reasons, and we've been slowly building that back up. Really, the only major addition to staff since that time was the addition of the CSU unit in police back in 2023. Gets credit for 2023, I think most of the hires were done late in the year, so 2024 was the first year, first full year of that unit. So 2025, to date, when we take a look at our real estate taxes, which makes up about a third of the general fund revenues, we increased millage going into this year by .0487, which was roughly a 2% increase. We thought it would generate about $315,000. The actual increase to date is trending below that. The primary reason is we've had several large abatements issued by the county on assessed values. In total, there's been a reduction in assessed value of just under 28 million, which impacts our revenues by about 93,000. Complicating that is when those decisions are made, there's lookback years, so if refunds are owed, we have to refund prior year's tax revenues as well. So when you take a look at the bar graph, and my mouse is going to show up, so it does, you could see when you take a look at our real estate tax, it's been roughly flat for the last three years at about 16 million. Act 511 Tax Group, which we sometimes call the Business Tax Group, there's more than just business taxes in here. We have the Realty Transfer. For 2025, it's performing well, at or slightly above prior years. That's an indicator of property transactions in the township, so that's an indicator of the value of the properties in township and how they're turning over. We have the Mercantile and the Business Privilege Tax. That's the gross receipt tax with a millage set at three mills. Mercantile is more of your retail component of that activity, whereas Business Privilege is all other commercial activity. Mercantile is performing pretty much at its capacity, for lack of a better term. It's as high as it's been, but it's also as high as it seems to go, at about $1.5 million per year. There are dips. Obviously, we've got the two COVID years here where they're, naturally, we saw decreases in just about everything during that time period. It has recovered nicely since then. In 2025, it's performing as expected. Business Privilege, on the other hand, we've seen a reduction, or the revenue has not performed as we had hoped it would. And just a quick note, when we passed the 2025 budget, we had seen at the time, we were talking about, or seeing increases in this revenue category over four straight years, so we had anticipated similar trends for 2025. It's, I just wanted to highlight now because that'll become important when we talk about some of the significant elements impacting the budget going forward. And then we have Audit and Discovery. Audit has been primarily wrapped up in focusing on some bigger cases in 2025, as the board is aware. So going into a little bit more detail on the Act 511 group, I wanted to highlight here, and there's a lot of numbers here, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about them. Really, it's the graph. The graph is demonstrating what we are seeing with our act, with this group of revenue. So this is about a third of our revenue, so it's a significant revenue group. We rely heavily on it for operations, and you could see, you could see the sawtooth nature of the graph. So, and we have good years and then not good years, and then good years and then not good years. And if nothing else, try to remember the, what the graph looks like with the positive years and then the years where the revenues aren't as strong. There's a direct correlation to the bottom line. And as we've talked about in these presentations in the past and some of the other conversations, Business Privilege and Mercantile taxes are very, very difficult to predict. There's really no indicators that immediately tie to the future performance. And the other element is that when there are changes in revenue, there are large swings. So when it changes, it's not by tens of thousands, it's usually by millions. And again, when we're using that for operating costs, there's a negative correlation. The other, another significant revenue group in the general fund are departmental earnings across the board. These are all looking really strong for 2025. I do want to point out that with police, most of that jump you see in 2025 is offsetting the cost for details where entities are hiring the police officers for various events. We saw a significant increase in that in 2025. And a lot of those are in Radnor. There are also some that are more regional, that our Police Department participates in, and we are reimbursed for all of that. Public Works, that rear yard trash collection and bulk pickup, it's pretty stable in how that performs every year. It's a pretty reliable revenue. And Parks and Recreation on the revenue side continues to show improvement every year. Then we get into permitting. IT, that's our cable franchise, you'll just see a steady decline in that, which makes sense when you think of all the streaming options that exist out there and folks leaving cable services. So we're seeing a direct revenue impact as that occurs. Community Development, this is the group where all of our permitting fees are at, and you could see, similar to the Business Privilege Tax, that it's, there are large swings from year to year. Fortunate for the township and the health of our economy and obviously how it impacts our operations, we do have a lot of development in town, and the revenues demonstrate that. On the expense side, wages. So our, we are a service organization. How we deliver service to the public is through our staff. So as you would imagine, the wages and associated costs with those personnel are our biggest expense categories. Two major factors that are causing the expenses to go up, both of which we've known, there are agreements that we talked about in these meetings, so, but we're starting to realize those costs. And that's the collective bargaining wage increases and the addition of the Police CSU unit. I did also highlight, we saw a spike in overtime this year. Again, that's the overtime for police details that are being offset by revenues. Payroll liabilities, it looks like 2025's doing really well. There's, that's a timing difference that'll be resolved here in the fourth quarter, but those expenses have, in spite of the increases in staff and costs, those expenses remain relatively stable. And that's a quick shout-out and a compliment to folks that were part of the decision-making over a decade ago when, with, in partnership with our unions, tightening up the pension benefits and limiting the growth in expense there, as well as the conversion over to a high deductible health plan for the employees. It has limited the growth in the healthcare costs for the township. Contracted Services, normal activity, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about how we budget for that going forward. We do have some major legal expenses that the board is aware of, that we're realizing costs in 2024 and '25 with ongoing, a couple of the ongoing issues. Community organizations are occurring exactly as budgeted. Those are, you know, discussed at length in these meetings, and those amounts are fixed. There's no fluctuation to those. And then when you look at the Transfers Group, which is a large expense group, it's covering our annual debt service, which we are starting to see some increases due to the 16 and 19 capital project bonds, as well as our departmental fleet and capital costs, which that, that's a fixed number. Whatever the board adopts with the budget, that's the amount that we send over, unless there's a project, a capital project added. So when we take a look at the general fund summary, what we're seeing is 2022 through '25. Again, I wanted to highlight a couple things in blue. You'll see the yo-yo effect of our Act 511 group, the up and down, then up and down. We also realized that last year, a significant spike in permitting revenue. And then I highlighted the contracted services because that, you could see the amount from those couple of legal issues that we're, that we're working through. And then inter-fund transfers, I highlighted again, just, most of that's timing differences, but we are seeing the number go up because of the debt side of things. And ultimately, when you get to the bottom line, this is as of the end of September. So it is, it is normal for us at the end of September to have large surplus revenue, or I'll call it net revenue, because as you're aware, we're collecting real estate taxes, Business Privilege taxes, and most of the significant development costs are coming in prior to, prior to August, really. So we, revenue spiked during the first half of the year, and then in the second half of the year, we're spending that down to ultimately what we end up with. So as we look forward through the last quarter of this year, what we're looking at here is the net revenue number highlighted in yellow at the top is just a carryover from the last slide. Those are the same numbers. And then a quick, a quick and dirty estimate on expended spend down. Finance has a much more detailed version of this. I wanted to put this in here for presentation purposes because it talks to the relationship between how the business taxes perform versus what ends up happening with the bottom line ultimately. So when you take where we're at at the end of September, you roll in estimates, well, estimates for 2025, the other years are actuals rounded. You could see that in years where Business Privilege Taxes did really well, we have surpluses. In years where Business Privilege Taxes did not do well, we have deficits. And it's significant, from a, you know, a two-plus million dollar excess or net revenue to a $2 million deficit. Last year was an exceptional year at $4 million, again, because of the spike in permitting and a really good Act 511 revenue year. And then this year, we're looking at a pretty significant deficit. And this is why we have a fund balance policy that we have. We were over that fund balance policy at the end of 2024. If everything happens as we're predicting today, we're going to chew into that, but that's why we have the fund balance policy, and that's why it's critical to make sure that that's healthy on an ongoing basis. So switching gears into looking forward at 2026, I wanted to talk a little bit about the process development. And I could, I could really get into a lot of detail here, I'll try to keep it concise. This process starts in earnest in July, where the departments are working independently and with finance to develop what ultimately becomes their recommend, or their request. Finance Department is putting a staffing budget together. We have to the employee detail on every single element of the payroll. So the wages, any kind of payroll liabilities that go along with that, collective bargaining agreement benefits or payments beyond just the wages, it's all built into the spreadsheet on a per-employee basis. So that, that's the level we go to on the staffing side. It's critical, it's our biggest expense, so we really have to do that. Finance is also putting together tax revenue estimates as best they can with the Act 511, but that's where we start from. They also work with the community organizations to get estimates for future years. Then the departments are working on their revenues, specific to their departments. Then the expense categories, so employee development, supplies and materials, contracted services, our fleet costs, utilities, and then their capital and equipment requests, as well as any staffing requests, and then ultimately their departmental narratives, which end up in the final budget book. That's all pretty much done at the end of August, and then in September and up to this point, we're spending time reviewing those revenues, looking at the expense, the expenses in those same level of detail. So from the personnel side, we take a look at overtime review, contracted services. In fact, within our accounting software, departments are required to put every single contracted service in there. So by contract, there's hundreds of rows of contracts when you look at all the departments together. We go to that level of detail. We go to that level of detail. Supplies and materials, employee development, fleet and equipment, all those same categories. And then we're meeting over the last couple of weeks, once, twice, sometimes three different times, to step through all these different elements that ultimately get us to what we call the Township Manager Recommended Budget, which is where we're at with tonight's presentation. And then from here, we, we go into, we'll start going into some of the details and what make, makes these numbers up and refine it to ultimately what the board adopts. But I, I do want to recognize quickly, it's an immense amount of work that the department, and it's, it's pretty much the folks sitting in this room that are doing this work. The staff is out, out doing their thing. So it's, it's the folks in this room that are putting the time and the energy into coming up with the estimates, working with me to try to refine the numbers as best we can and be on the same page as often as possible. It's not always the case, but everyone's very professional and they all put the time in to make sure that what ultimately gets presented tonight is realistic. It accurately reflects what it takes for this operation to, to run in the, the most efficient and best way possible back to the community that we're all serving. So some of the significant expense considerations or things that are, we're seeing that are impacting the bottom line that we wanted to highlight. To start this part of the conversation, it's a quick review on what makes up our revenues and expenses. There's a lot of detail here, but when you take a look at the revenues, you could, you could see that the pie chart is really three, three segments. There's the Act 511, which is about a third. We have our real estate, which is about a third, and then everything else, which is the last third. And of that, the permits and the departmental earnings are the two bigger categories there. On the expense side, you, it's, it's easy to see that, you know, what's almost 75% of our budget is wages compensation and then payroll liabilities and benefits. And then when you add the debt service and the capital contributions to that, which is the inter-fund transfers number, you can see that's about 75% of the budget. And then contracted services, the biggest piece of the rest of that. So part of our budget conversations, we wanted to highlight real estate tax. I touched on this a moment ago. We've seen, the board has adopted millage changes over the last couple of years. For right now, what you're looking at for 2026 is no change in the millage, but we wanted to highlight that in terms of what we're seeing on the revenue side. So I touched on earlier that for the last three years, so for 2024, '25, and if nothing changes, '26, you could really, you see that the real estate tax revenue is flat at about six, just shade under 16 million. And in fact, in spite of the millage increase in 2025, it's basically break even with where we were at last year in terms of revenue. And then on the expense side, what we're seeing is, it was highlighted quickly in the, the general fund expense graph, when you see the wages and the cost for personnel going up, that's the total payroll number. And I highlighted again, what's driving the increase there really are the, the collective bargain agreements increases, as well as the CSU unit. But we're seeing steady, regular growth in that category, compounded by legal expenses that we're incurring over the last couple of years for some special legal situations. You could see quickly that those, just those two expense items alone are outpacing what is a significant part of our revenue. And as you would imagine, the translation of that is the revenues are just not being, they're not able to keep up with the expense side of the ledger. And when we talk about real estate taxes for Radnor, we are fortunate, very, very fortunate that that revenue is very, very reliable. We have a strong taxpaying base. So when we predict real estate taxes outside of, you know, the abatements and some of the items that we saw this year, it is a very reliable source of revenue for our operations. So what we're hoping to do with this budget and continuing forward is, and, and for those board members that have been here a few years, this, you've heard this before. So I apologize for repeating, but if we're able to shift a greater percentage of our operating costs to real estate taxes as a form of revenue that is reliable, it'll solidify or put the township in much better financial position going forward. And as the last bullet point on the conclusion side says, the, the other element to that is, in years where we do have good business tax years, or we see spikes in development that generates revenue, that those dollars can be immediately earmarked for capital program, which we currently don't have. Right now, our capital program consists of borrowing and doing very, very specific projects, usually after years of, you know, not being able to do the projects, then we borrow and go. This, this would be a shift towards more of a forward-looking capital program where we could see projects that we're going to do today, as well as projects that we see coming down the line and establish a revenue source to start funding those. So you take your, your reliable revenue base and use that for your fixed expense side of your, of the ledger, and then you take your volatile revenue, your business taxes, and use that for something that's, you can match expenses with. So when, when revenues are good, you do more projects. When revenues are bad, you do less projects, where we don't have that same flexibility on the operating side. So as we get into the 2026 numbers, the general fund, this is the same organization that we've seen in the other presentations with the revenue and the expenses of the general fund. We're looking at 2022, '23, and '24. Those are actual numbers. For '25, we've got our original budget as it was adopted by the board, as well as our 2025 year-to-date numbers, which at this point, I think this number represents, actually to date, including last week, whereas the numbers before were only through September. I think this does include the first couple of weeks of October as well, as well as where the 2026 Township Manager level of the budget numbers are at. So, and when you look at the numbers more carefully or in more detail, you see the same Act 511 yo-yoing with the up and down. Right now, for 2026, we have the estimates put in at the same levels that we included for 2025. As we're realizing in 2025, those did not materialize. So at this point, we're, we're anticipating, predicting, hoping a little bit that we see a recovery. We have seen that, again, in the year, it goes down, and then there's an immediate recovery the next year. That's been the trend over the last couple of years. That's why that number, that estimate has been put in like that. And real estate is at zero millage and the, the revenue reflects that, same 16 million-ish that we've been at for the last couple of years. And then on the expense side, as I touched on, the CSU unit and the, the wage increases for the staff. So I think I have it on the next slide. Yeah, I touched on those bullet points already. The key expenditure assumptions, staffing shown at current headcounts. We do have a couple vacancies right now in a couple departments, as well as we're in the process of hiring the Economic Development Manager. We actually started interviewing in a week for that. And then the transfers, I went into a little bit more detail here, so you could see the debt service is about 3.4 million of that, and the departmental capital as budgeted or as, as shown here is at about 1.5 million. And we've drawn that number down over the last couple of years by doing a more capital leasing, which obligates us in future years, but it smooths out the revenue on the, the more near term. So for a $200,000 garbage truck, we don't have to spend 200,000. We spend 70,000 per year for five years. So that, we've done a little bit more of that in recent years, so we've seen that, that part of the budget smoothed out for us and been able to bring the, the total number down. We are, quite honestly, at the same time, pushing vehicles out, and I think that's some of the, the harder conversations we have in our budget meetings is, you know, things are just, you know, on the capital side just have to wait until revenue numbers So some of the discussions, teeing them up going forward as we go from now until the end of November into December with the finalized budget, is just getting into the details about the relationship between our fixed costs, as well as the taxes uses, used to fund them. How to fix the volatility with, in our bottom line, which kind of goes hand in hand with the first bullet point, and then start incorporating some funding strategies for departmental staffing requests, which I'm going to get into here in a moment, as well as a capital improvement plan. We also know that we have some fire and EMS costs coming down the line, as well as we start implementing significant elements of the capital, or the comprehensive plan, which this, these numbers do include a look at the zoning review. So that is in here. We kind of, during the, the end of the comp plan, the zoning reviews seem to rise to the top in terms of immediate things to start working on, so we did include that in here. So from the departments, staffing requests, all of which are aimed at approving services. On the police side, similar to last year, there's a request in for, for three officers. Going to some explanation here without getting into the full details of the staffing study that was done in 2022. The, the staffing study, based on the township's population, which has grown, increased call volume, as well as safety details, that's the off, the offset in revenue, or the offset in overtime. We're seeing that really tick up. And it's important to note that with those, those are officers that are coming off a shift or otherwise on a day off that are coming into work. So it is taking our existing 50 officers and just working to stretch them thinner. As well as, we have an increasing caseload on the detective side. The report goes into some detail about the emphasis on community policing, which is something that we take very seriously. It's a very high priority within the organization, and it's something that we feel very strongly about that connects the, the department with the community, not just in a time of need, but on an all-the-time basis. That takes time and resources. So culmination of all those things, the, the staffing study does recommend 53 officers. We're at 50 now. The, the second part of that explanation talks about, as we get into 2026, we know there's going to be some fire and EMS conversations that are going, we're going to start having. The recommendation is to perhaps have, start holding quarterly public meetings where we can kind of get into more detail than we're able to during these Board of Commissioner meetings, to give the board a better sense of the more day-by-day activity that our officers are doing today, as well as ultimately what are, the recommendations are going to start looking like on the fire EMS side. Parks and Recreation, we're asking for or recommending a new Parks Operations Coordinator. As we've, well, Tammy does all this stuff, all these activities now, and Tammy's doing this stuff usually between 7:00 and 10:00 p.m. on Sunday. So this person is a parks-specific resource that can, is someone who has boots on the ground in our parks every day, handling maintenance contracts, projects, operational support, monitoring infrastructure, any kind of improvements that are taking place, any kind of improvements that are done, to see what the status of the parks facilities are. We have rain gardens, we have pond management, we have trail conditions, and then we're always looking at developing and implementing the park system. There's several recommendations in the comp plan, so we see that as something that's going to be critical in the years to come. Having this resource would be critical to get, to have someone in the parks on a daily basis with an eye towards these types of improvements. Whereas public works are there, they're maintaining what we have, they're in, they're out, because our inventory of parks that need to be maintained is something that has grown over time while the staff haven't. So public works is stretched a little thinner. They don't necessarily have the time to spend to make sure that the algae levels in the ponds are where we want them to be, or don't want them to be. Getting into all the facilities within the parks to make sure that repair and maintenance is exactly the way we want it. The public works guys are in, doing their thing, making sure that it's operational for the time being. This would be a resource to just, to, a little bit more emphasis on some of those areas. Which is a good transition over to public works. Within the general fund, public works is requesting another mechanic, similar, we have three mechanics now, this would bring us up to four. The idea or the request really comes down to getting our township fleet compliant, fixed, and moving on a faster basis. So if there's another mechanic, train mechanic in the, in the garage, we're turning around broken equipment faster, we're keeping our existing, we're, we're doing inspections faster, and we're not losing those assets to sitting, you know, third in line for whatever it is that needs to be worked on. At the same time, on the park maintenance side, there, we are requesting another laborer. This is an emphasis, this is the same request that we made a year ago with regard to getting some expertise on the tree side. It's similar to the conversations that we had with the Parks Operations Coordinator. Trees is an everyday conversation right now. I think Mr. Foster is doing most of those conversations, and it's, it takes a significant amount of his time and then the, the park supervisor as well. If we had a, a resource that was dedicated to that, and it's someone who could also help the crews out when needed, that would be a, a benefit. And then on the sewer side, this would be paid for out of the sewer rent, which is why it's shown separately. But adding a fourth member to that team, that'll improve response time for emergency callouts, improve system-wide cleaning approaches, and also with our daily before-you-dig markouts, which if we have a, a person or two now on vacation, that pretty much our entire sewer crews are out marking before-you-digs, because that is always a priority. We are mandated by the state to be out at those sites within a certain period of time. So that always takes priority over what would otherwise be maintenance on the system itself. So those are the requests from staff. Switching gear now to the Sanitary Sewer Fund. So a little bit different conversation with this fund than we've had in prior years, which I'm happy to report. The board has agreed to rate increases for the last couple of years. A couple of those increases were, were significant. We talked about it at the time, that they were necessary to keep up with the RHM costs, which were rising at a similar pace. The good news is that we were able to keep up with those RHM costs, and the revenue in this fund is now able to support the activity that's going on within it. To make sure that we're staying on top of rising costs, what is included in here is a modest 2.7 increase, which is 35 cents, or .35 on every $1,000 gallon. So a pretty modest increase. And again, that's just to make sure that costs don't, don't turn around and accelerate beyond our revenues and put us in a similar situation in future years where we're having to ask for more significant rate increases just to, to meet the cost of the fund. Stormwater, similar to the Sanitary Sewer Fund. This is a, a fund that performs very well. Right now, we have no fee increase for 2026. I think we presented with the, the funding plan, with the additional projects that were approved a couple of months ago, we anticipate needing fee increases in, in the near term, most likely in 2027. It's going to depend on the, the debt service of the various bond issues that we've issued, as well as any kind of capital costs, as those projects that have been identified start going out to bid. If we see major fluctuations in what has been estimated, estimated versus what those contracts come back at, that may ultimately require a, a fee adjustment. But for right now, the numbers are very similar to that, as they've been in prior years. for right now, the numbers are very similar to as they've been in prior years, about a million dollars of revenue, and we're spending all that on contracted services for engineering studies, as well as capital projects. So the next steps. Dr. Ober 13 tonight, and we're doing the presentation. At the October 27 meeting, we always have a resolution on that adopts the preliminary budget. It's it's a charter. It's satisfying a charter requirement. We understand and write into that legislation that it is a preliminary budget. It's not intended to be the final budget, and that the board will ultimately adopt something later in the calendar year. Then we have November. We have two meetings in November that we could add specific items to. We have the opportunity to add a special meeting or two if needed. But as scheduled, on November 24, we'd look to introduce the budget ordinance and the associated legislation with that, and then adopt on December 8. Thank you for taking the time to let me go through all that. I'd be happy to answer questions now, or as as you have the opportunity to get into more detail, answer those offline as well.
Thank you very much. I have two quick questions, hopefully. What do we know about the county assessment sort of appeals? Are they done? Like, or are we going to have more of the same thing that happened this year?
I'm going to allow Mr. Tate or Amy to Ms. Lacy to address that question, because honestly, I am not sure.
There there is no way to predict that. If you are you referring to the appeals from the reassessment done? And I do believe most of those are done.
I mean, that's that's what hit us last time, even though we increased taxes by 2%.
Right.
We didn't get any more revenue.
Right. Anytime there is any kind of reassessment on a property, that property owner has the right to appeal it right away, and it typically is granted. Those larger abatements, though, that go back several years, most of those are done. We just got hit with a quite a large one this year.
Thanks. That's helpful. And then the other one, Bill, I know I had mentioned this to you, is to thinking forward. We've talked about all the land development that has gone on in the township, and that will be a revenue source. You know, we have St. Honor Ray, we have the Hamilton. I mean, we it goes on and on. A way to get any kind of handle on the order of magnitude of that revenue source would be helpful to us in thinking about this overall, not tonight, but just in thinking about it overall.
Yep. Very quickly, we we did account for that in our estimate for 2026. We had the a handful of significant projects included in there. St. Honor Ray, 60 West, ones that are known today. Tried to avoid any ones that were currently on the docket but not approved. There's always there's always several of those. So we tried not to get ahead of ourselves in including revenue there. But the ones that are approved, we did include in.
Thank you.
And have relative relatively confident assurance that they're going to move forward next year.
I just wanted not leave that hanging out there on the record, because I know that we always get comments about you're only approving developments because you're going to get all of these great monies in receivables. But as nice as it is to get the money in, I just wanted to remind everybody, no one on this board needs the reminder, but maybe the members of the public. They're also going to come with a lot of expenses. We will spend a lot more money on the schools. That's not in our problem, but our school district gets its money from the same place that we do. We're going to spend a lot more money paving roads, handling traffic, hiring police officers, dealing with stormwater management issues, dealing with, you know, absolutely everything from beginning to end. I could go on for hours and hours. I would probably just be reiterating the presentation that you just gave, going through all the stuff that we do as a township. So I just want to stress that no one on this board is under the impression that by building new developments, we're going to get lots of income to do fun projects with. If we break even, it'll be nice.
Here, here. I would I would just one significant element to that list will be fire and EMS. Yeah, especially with the the two projects geared towards senior living.
That's right. Thank you. Very clear presentation. I was noticing, I don't know how you do it, but you make it look fresh every year, rather than regurgitating last year's with new numbers. So I appreciate that. I know that in years prior, you've offered kind of office hours with you and Mr. Tate, Ms. Lacy, to kind of sit down with commissioners and walk through step by step. Expect a an outreach from me for sure, and I really encourage the other commissioners to do so. I just think it gives you a lot of insight behind the numbers. So I'll be seeing you on that soon.
Absolutely. And I just the the refresh, just to touch on that, it's intentional because this is very cyclical, and you can get kind of bogged down in the mundane part of it. So refreshing the look is intentional to make sure that we are looking at it as deeply as we need to, to make sure it's as accurate as possible every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank I want to thank everyone here for putting up with our presentations. I know it takes a good chunk of change. I do, and I should have done this beforehand, because hopefully you're not sitting here waiting for some of the agenda items that have been pulled. We do have on the business agenda, two items for A and for B that are being tabled tonight. And I just wanted to, if you're here for that, the Meadow Crest Road issues, they are not going to happen this evening. They have given an extension, and we'll see them at another meeting. The next item is public participation. This is the general public participation. Anyone's welcome to speak. You have five minutes. Just give your name and street. And is there anyone that would like to speak? Go ahead. I'll time you. Don't worry.
Is this where I stand? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just speak loudly into the mic.
Speak loudly. Okay. My name is Alan Walstetter. I live at 866 Skyline Drive in Erdenheim, Pennsylvania, not in the township. And I'm here to just talk a bit about the plans for a charter school on the campus where Valley Forge Military Academy is. Before I start, I just wanted to say to Chief Flanagan that I don't think I've ever seen at one time that many heroes before. And it's really the interesting piece about what we're planning at the charter school that is proposed there, subject to the approval of the Radnor School District, is actually quite different than, you know, what's been there for 98 years. As you may have heard, the Valley Forge Military Academy is closing after 98 years. But a fair amount has changed since, I guess, 1927. And and I think that what this does is is present an opportunity to almost press the refresh button on what's going on there in three important ways with this charter school we're proposing, which is the Valley Forge Public Service Academy. It would open as a grade six to eight charter school, 150 students, and grow to six to 12. And the refresh button is it's really different in three important ways with what's there currently. First, as you can tell by the name, it's a change in focus from military service to public service. Interestingly, it is for students interested in careers in police, fire, EMS, first responders. Actually, there's a track, I don't want the commissioners to get nervous, in politics for students interested in that, and what we would call civil service. So it's a pivot from military service to public service. That's one big piece. I think the other piece that I know Commissioner Riley's been involved in education for some time. What we are seeing nationally, and I'm with School Improvement Partnership, a national firm that supports quality charter schools, focuses on data transparency in that sector. What we're finding is that more students, let's say than last year, not a majority, but more are interested in coming out of public school potentially with a career. Linking public education and career is something that we're seeing more of, and this provides very much a way to do that. Those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, 150 of them, that would start if the Radnor School District approves our charter school application, will have an opportunity to look at a number of different careers in a very hands on basis. I think the third piece, and particularly for this board, it may be the most interesting in terms of what's being refreshed here. There's an opportunity to refresh the relationship between that campus and the surrounding community. And this is, as Commissioner Larkin pointed out, I mean, there's always the possibility that any open piece of land can become more new developments, you know, of, you know, beautiful homes, and that's always an idea. But by having the charter school there, it maintains the concept, sort of the mission of what, you know, the the foundation sort of wants, but but goes about it in a in a new fashion. I think a couple of one piece that is relevant, particularly after, yes, I have one minute left. Okay. Let's see. I think the important thing is, one of the things we want to do, consistent with the way you all do things, we want to solicit input. So we have Community Day on campus Saturday, this Saturday, from noon to 5:00, in addition to, you know, cadets there will of course have face painting, bounce, and all that. But importantly, an opportunity for interested residents to sign our petition, which we need to be able to go before the Radnor School District with the support of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public participation? Seeing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the Board of Commissioners or the public would like to pull? No, seeing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney in a second. Second by Commissioner Riley. And we'll call a vote. All in favor? Aye? It's unanimous. All right. Moving on to the business agenda. As I mentioned, item 4A and 4B are tabled at the applicant's request. We'll move on to item 4C, Ordinance 2025-10. This is an introduction of the ordinance, the appointment of Portnoy Law Association Limited as a solicitor and assessment fees for the collection of delinquent utility billing and real estate tax accounts. Mr. Tate, you want to start us off on this?
Thank you, Madam President. Before you tonight is the introduction of the ordinance. And I want to acknowledge Amy Lacy for her work in the past six months, working with Portnoy Law and Associates to bring this to this point. We've met, we've talked with the engagement, and I'm going to allow Amy to get into some of the details of how this would work. But Portnoy Law Associates is a firm with over 35 years of experience collecting delinquent real estate taxes and other municipal fees. They represent over 200 municipal clients across 30 Pennsylvania counties, including school districts and other authorities, also serve as the collector for the Radnor Township School District. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy to provide more details and information on where we're headed with this ordinance.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Bob Tate mentioned, the ordinance in front of you would be to appoint Portnoy Law Associates as the collector for delinquent accounts for real estate and sewer or excuse me, real estate and utility billing, which includes sewer and stormwater. Currently, we bill 8,900 real estate tax accounts and 8,800 utility billing accounts. And the present process is we send those bills out. We send notices to those outstanding accounts. And with the real estate, they get turned over each year to the Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau for further lien and collection. And with the utility accounts, those get turned over to the township solicitor for lien. What we are proposing tonight is that we turn those accounts over to Portnoy Law Associates, and they will use their process to collect on those balances. In the audience tonight is Kevin Burax from Portnoy Law Associates, and he would be here to answer any more specific questions that you might have.
Thank you. Good summary. Any questions for Mr. Tate, Ms. Lacy, or our representative from Portnoy?
Yeah, I would I'd be interested in just sort of understanding the fee structure and the add-ons and how you get paid.
My name is Kevin Burax. I'm an attorney with Portnoy Law Associates. So yeah, I'm happy to answer your question. So the way it works is that there's essentially an eight step process that we utilize to to collect. And the goal is basically to create incentive to pay. And so each step is to create some incentive from the step before. Can you hear me okay?
I can see.
A little better?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'm usually not too tall, but today I think I am. Sure. Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Great. So the idea obviously is to bring us, as we want to bring the money in for for the township. So we try to do that by creating incentives, as I mentioned. Some of them, I'm going to say are positive incentives. So we, you know, for people that need a little bit of assistance, we have flexible payment plans. We have a hardship program. Residents can go on our website, look up their balances, make payments online. So for those people that want to pay, we try to facilitate that and maybe in a sense, make it easier for them to do that. So the money comes in for the township. For those people that maybe have the ability to pay and just don't want to pay, we're going to create some, what I'm going to say, negative incentives for them, where they're going to see that going forward, the benefits of being delinquent aren't there anymore. And for a lot of our clients, as a result of that type of change, that mindset change, a lot of our clients actually see a reduction, the amount of delinquent accounts after we're hired. So not only are we helping on the delinquent side, bringing that money in, but then going forward, a lot of those people who in the past maybe just were waiting to pay because it wasn't convenient for them, they're going to see that convenience is probably gone, because they might have to pay more if they don't pay. And thus, over time, they'll start paying not only the delinquents, but what, you know, future bills on time. So for just as an example, for, you know, we represent over 200 clients, as was mentioned. We represent the Radnor Township School District locally. We also represent a lot of the local townships, Lower Marion, Tridifrin, East Town, Upper Marion. So we all we do delinquent collection work for all of them. But for our tax clients, and we actually represent more than 10% of the school districts in the state collecting their delinquent taxes, for our tax clients specifically, we've seen a reduction for, you know, all of these clients, 79% of our tax clients have seen a reduction, the amount of delinquent accounts after we're hired. And of that group, over 60% of them have seen a reduction of over 20%. So that's pretty significant. These aren't anomalies. I mean, these are real pretty big figures. And I think, again, the reason is that under our collection process, we create those incentives. And for most of our clients, before we're hired, they know that there's a group of people that just they can pay, and for some reason, they're choosing not to pay. They're waiting because the incentive's not there. We change that, and that's and that's a pretty big difference. So and just with regard to taxes specifically, and I'm saying taxes because the reality is when it comes to utility type fees, it's probably almost 100% of our clients. But it's a little bit of a disingenuous way to say, because for most of our clients, when they hire us for the utility side, there's usually a backlog. So there's usually a lot of accounts that maybe have been sitting out there for a while that haven't been collected. And thus, when we first get a bunch from a for a specific client, going forward, we're usually going to get less on the utility side. But for taxes, when we start collecting delinquent taxes for municipality, we're only getting one year at a time. We're not taking anything back. So currently, the township uses the Tax Claim Bureau to collect the delinquent taxes. If you were to hire us going forward, we would just get the delinquent 25s this year and start collecting them. So anything with the county would stay with the county at that point in time. That's a long way to get to your question. But your question, you were asking about the structure. So the way the structure works from a collection standpoint is the first step that we take is what's called a validation notice. Only comes across at $25. So for someone where this is a first time delinquency, they just they forgot about this, it's an oversight, they're paying $25, they're in and out. No one's going to complain about that. I was actually, I was on the TE school board for eight years, and we did use our firm for collection. So I got to see a little bit from your side of the table. And you have a very nice crowd here tonight. At our meetings, I can't say that the people in the audience were At our meetings, I can't say that the people in the audience were quite as civil. They were generally, and I don't know, good school districts like Radnor, but the people that came to our meetings usually had some kind of beef, but over my eight years in the board, they never complained about my firm. Like, well, we're doing something good, because the delinquent collector's not always the favorite person for someone, but, you know, they weren't complaining about that. So $25, you're in and out. We give them 40 days to either make payment, sent by payment plan, if they need a hardship application, send them a hardship application, but we give them a little bit of time there, but it's only $25, okay? If they don't respond to that, the next step in our process is what's called a Notice of Delinquency and Fee Shifting. This only comes at a cost of $40 plus certified postage, which is about $9 right now. So in a sense, you're getting two bites of the apple for around $70. This is a notice, the Notice of Fee Shifting informs them that going forward, cost of collection will be borne by the property owner and not by the township. It contains a list of fees, and that's what, the ordinance that's in front of you, it has a list of fees. That list is put in that second letter. That creates a lot of incentive to pay, because people realize, like, you know, they look at that list, like, I don't want to have to pay extra. If I have the money in my pocket right now, why would I, why would I waste the extra money when I can just pay it? So traditionally, for our firm, about 59% of the accounts that we collect don't have any attorney's fees added to it, which in a sense means they're responding to one of those first two notices. So more than half don't pay any attorney's fees, because they're responding. Great. We give them 35 days from that. That's a, that's a notice that costs 30, that's sent by certified mail. And we give them 35 days. This is the only thing that we charge directly to our clients, and it's reimbursable. So for, the total amount of letters that we would send out, that second step, we would eventually bill the township for that invoice, for that, for those letters. We add that to the fee, so you're getting it back, the amount we're collecting, we add it to it. But we also won't invoice the township for that cost until we've cumulatively collected that much. So save us $1,000 to send out all those letters. We wait until we've collected $1,000 to bill you. So there's no new money coming out of the township's account to cover that cost. And then going forward, the other, I'm going forward, the more steps, but there's some steps where there's actually court costs, sheriff's fees. My firm will actually outlay that on behalf of the township, knowing we're going to collect it back. So those are the first two steps in our process. The third step is, it's a legal demand letter, letting them know that a lien will be filed against their property if they don't respond. That comes at a cost of $175. So now the cost has gone up. So for someone who's ignored those first two steps that are, you know, pretty much low-balance fees, all of a sudden, this has gone up a little bit, that's to catch someone's attention. And, you know, they think that it's just going to go away, they realize, and at that point in time, okay, it's going to cost a little more. We give them 30 days to respond to that. The next step would be to file a lien against the property. That comes at a cost of $250. There's court costs involved. My firm will front those court costs for the township. When a lien is filed, interest starts to accrue. So all, everything that we're doing is under a specific Pennsylvania law called the Municipal Claims and Tax Leans Act. Interest starts to accrue under that act at 10% per annum. So that's the township's money. So not only are you creating incentive by filing a lien and protecting the township's interests, because if the property were to transfer, or there's a bankruptcy, there's greater interest with the lien, but with that interest accruing, it's now another form of incentive for someone to pay if they haven't been doing anything. The next step in our process, if they don't respond to that, would be what's called a writ of certiorari fascis. It's akin to like a civil complaint, but the sheriff will actually go out, knock on their door, hand them the paperwork. So at the fifth step in the process, if they knew the first four steps and didn't contact us in any way, that fifth step, the sheriff's out there. So again, every step has a little bit more incentive from the step before to do something. If they don't respond to that, there's a 10-day notice, and then eventually, there's a judgment. And then unlike the county, when they collect delinquent taxes, where the teeth of the county's process is basically to sell their property. When the county collects, they proceed, it's a different Pennsylvania law called the Real Estate Tax Sale Law. Their process essentially is that by July 31st, the first year after the delinquency, they're going to send a notice saying you're delinquent, and pretty much nothing happens for a full year after that. There's a tax sale the second year, and then there's a tax sale the third year if it doesn't sell the second year. So the teeth of the county's process is, if you don't do anything, we're going to sell your property. That's the last step in our collection process, and in reality, we very, very rarely have to do it. So just as, give me some round numbers as an example. Last year, my firm had about 88,000 delinquent accounts that came into our firm for collection across the state. We're in 31 different counties. We're based in King of Prussia, but, you know, we do represent people throughout the state. So 88,000 accounts we were asked to collect. Last year, we sold 25 properties. So we're not selling a lot of properties. We only had a list for sale, about 600 properties. So even that dropped down significantly, but we don't have to list a lot for sale, and we really don't have to sell a lot. And the reason is because we create incentives on the early side of the process, and because that, people come to the table, and they don't want to have to pay extra. And at the same time, for those people that were delinquent, after they went through the process once, there's a decent chance that in the next year or two, when they get the bill from the township, they're just going to pay it, because they realize, like, if, if I'm going to hold the money, I'll hold it on a different bill, because this bill, there's no benefit anymore to do that. So for those people, again, that need help, we're going to work with them through the hardship program, the payment plans, give them the ability to pay online. For those people that don't want to pay, and most boards don't have a lot of sympathy for that group, there's now going to be incentives to get them to pay. So this works for the taxes, and the same processes for, you know, sewer, stormwater, abatement and nuisance fees. And again, your taxpayers are probably already familiar, at least some of the ones that are delinquent are probably already familiar with us, because the school district bill's a lot higher, and if they're delinquent there, there's, you know, there's a chance, some of them are the same. So they'll be working with us. If they're on payment plans, we'll get them on payment plans for you. For hardship people, the same type of thing, we'll get them on the hardship. The process works well, it's fair. I mean, it's fair, because most people pay their bills on time, so this helps prevent rates from going up and taxes from going up from the group that's not paying. And then the group, and that group, that those people that do need help, they're going to be protected. I mean, anyone who is really in financial hardship, they enter a hardship program, their property's not going to be sold. And the same, I can't say the same is necessarily true under the county, because they don't have the ability to look at the system like we do. We have a, we have a big staff, we have almost 100 people in our firm. Every step that we take in our, when we're proceeding on a collection, an attorney's looking at, someone's looking at to make sure this is the next step, this is the right step. It's not a button just being pressed. So in a sense, the township will retain a little bit more local control over the process by using us, because we're going to be working with you on setting up the payment plan structure and the hardship program and all that stuff. And you want to change in the process, you want to talk about the process, we're here to do that. Where with the county, once accounts generally go to the county, there's, you know, it's not accounting the county, it's just, that's not the way it's set up to do. They have a mass amount of accounts to collect, because, you know, any municipality that's using them, any school district that's using them, they have all those taxes, and the county has its own taxes. So this way, you guys retain a little control. So hopefully, that was a long-winded answer, but I think, hopefully answered what you're, what you're asking.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Thanks.
Thanks so much.
All right. Whoops, I forgot my microphone. All right. Could I get a motion? This is just the introduction, but to introduce Ordinance 2025-10.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Riley, and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Agnew. Any public participation on this? Seeing none. And any further Commissioner questions that might be for Mr. Tate or Ms. Lacy? No? Okay. I'm going to call a vote on ordinance, the introduction of Ordinance 2025-10. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right. So we have four to one. The next item is 4D, Resolution 2025-140, Authorization to Purchase HVAC Building Automation System, BAS, Control Upgrade in the Amount of $187,600. This is the second and final phase of the multi-phase plan to upgrade and modernize the Radnor Township building HVAC controller hardware and software. The project would be funded from the proceeds of the 2024 Facilities General Obligation Bond. Mr. Norsini, is this you?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as was noted in the title, this is the second phase of updating our controlling system for the HVAC. So in 2024 of last year, the board approved the software purchase, which currently runs in the background of our existing software. So it's a sizable cost, but the board needs to understand, this is a redo of all our controls for the 18-year-old controls we have now. For instance, each controller you see on the wall is proprietary to Honeywell. And if we were to buy a Honeywell replacement, it doesn't work, because the firmware for the new ones is not compatible with the firmware for the old ones. Right? So that's just the beginning of it. And a bulk of this project is, as noted in there, to run CAT 6 cable, the latest communication cable for these systems. That literally includes, you know, workers up in the crawl space, running conduit, bringing all this stuff back to our controllers. So the end result, you'll see, are new controllers, but there's so much going on in the background of that in this project. This is true like a construction project here at the Township Boning. We have the 54 heat pumps, energy recovery units, rooftop units, the cooling tower, all this will be controlled by this new system. And the good thing is, the new system is not proprietary. So whatever controller, whatever thermostats you see can be replaced with a different brand, it doesn't have to be the same, and the firmware is not proprietary to that either. So this is, that's just part of the ongoing ease of use and low cost of the system. The system is 18 years old, just like with any facility or anything that you own, at one point, there is time to replace and to upgrade. We have reached that. So the, in short, aside from what's in the memo, the bottom line is, we will be able to better control our heating and cooling at a, and when I say at a lesser cost, I'm not saying efficiencies in the heating and cooling, but being able to see what's going on. For instance, in talking to Mr. Hale, if a rooftop unit goes out, he does not know. With this new system, he will know. Right? So that alarm will go off, you know, literally and figuratively, and an email or a call will go out to him. We get better reporting, and we are able to adjust things better, and we should be getting more accurate temperature readings back. So again, this system is scalable, it's not proprietary. In terms of facilities maintenance, this is time, it is time to do this. Mr. Hale's been asking for this actually for some time, and we're hoping to get this paid for out of the bond. And then moving forward, obviously, we now have a new system that we, that can grow with us and be adjusted, which this current system cannot. So we respectfully request the award of this contract, which is to Conexus, and it is under a state contract.
So I, two questions. How long will this last?
That's a great question, Commissioner.
Well, thanks. You have a great answer?
Eighteen years. In my experience.
Eighteen years. Yes. Now, so Commissioner, I don't have the answer to that. This system lasted 18 years, but really should have been replaced five or six years ago. And I, I will find that out for you. I don't have that exact answer.
Well, the, so the firmware is not proprietary, is that what's not proprietary?
Correct. So we're now able to switch out these thermostats without Bob Hale going crazy.
What about the software?
So the software you purchased, the board authorized the purchase of last year, it was Tritium Niagara front-end software. So that is a proprietary software that runs everything, but we are able to use non-proprietary devices with it. Right? If that makes sense. So the software that runs in the background, that does the reporting, is able to run our hardware. So I guess the best way to look at this is, 2024 was a software contract, 2025 is hardware.
So my concern, if they don't go together, is that, you know, I don't know if it was 60 Minutes or who it was, the, over the weekend, but talking about a not-friendly nation, and how much they've infiltrated our systems. And so my concern is, who's protecting that? If these things aren't proprietary, I'm concerned that there's not the kind of protection.
So Tritium Niagara front-end is proprietary, so the operating system is proprietary, right? That is software specific to that company. What's not proprietary are the thermostats, which may sound like something insignificant, but it's not.
You're right.
So we have a lot of thermostats that don't work, and Bob is, and Mr. Hale is unable to replace them. So as far as system security?
Yeah.
So I'm not the IT professional that can speak to that, and I would obviously talk to Mr. Hale, but I know Mr. Hale takes security seriously, and we have, you know, authentication issues, processes within the township, but I can find that out. But they do talk, so the idea of getting the Tritium as phase one was to go forth with this hardware project. So as far as security, I would talk to Mr. Hale, but I, my recommendation is to not let that be a cloud over the award of this project.
Okay.
Thanks. Good questions. So I have not yet gotten a motion to approve Resolution 2025-140. So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney, and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riley. Any other Commissioner questions, comments? Any public participation? Seeing none. I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2025-140. All in favor? Aye? Unanimous. All right. That concludes our business agenda. Reports from board liaisons. Anyone have anything? No? New business? Mr. White, we did want to commend the county for their giving us radios.
Yes, and I apologize, I don't have the details on the number of radios or the exact dollar amount, but if, I don't know if the commissioners are aware, if the public's aware, the county is in the final steps of a county-wide system upgrade, communication system upgrade. In my very non-technical way, it, we are switching from analog to digital communications, and as such, it required all-new hardware to be able to communicate on the new system. As the county is rolling this out, they are purchasing the first round of radios for all of the agencies in the county. So our police department was in receipt of all of those radios. And I want to say, we had, in prior years, before we knew that the county was going to buy this first round, we were putting estimates in several hundreds of thousands of dollars for these radios. So the amount is significant. And as you can imagine, it's, it's every officer, it's in all of the vehicles. We even have a couple for Public Works for emergency situations, so it's, it's a lot of radios. So, yeah, I wanted to just take a moment and recognize the county for having that, having, including that in their planning, instead of, you know, upgrading to this new system and not equipping all of the agencies with their ability to, to be able to communicate on it.
Thank you.
Sorry. So when you said we were looking at it before, so I don't remember, did we allocate money in the budget for this, now we don't have to spend?
So on an, yeah, no. The short answer is no. What, yeah.
Well, I was hoping.
So in our, in our departmental capital and fleet spreadsheet, it's, we have the current year budget, along with about 10 years looking out. So every year, we go through and update that spreadsheet for the current year, and then obviously, any kind of ripple effect in future years. This was always a number we had in the out years, and so this saved us from having to spend money in an out year, but it was never something that we budgeted, where we're realizing actual savings. It's, I mean, it's opportunity cost, too. I mean, it is several hundreds of thousands of dollars that we would have had to include in this year's or next year's budget.
Any other questions?